...golf balls and stuff.
Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present at this time. We'd like to thank those of you who are with us tonight and the audience, as well as those who may be viewing us this evening at home. We'd like to begin this meeting by invocation. We've asked council member Alsop if he'd lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Hatch. Those that like to join with us, please stand.
For heaven and father, thank you for letting us be here tonight. And we just ask you to guide us and direct us into things that need to be done with the city. We ask that your special hand be on now Senator John Kyle, that you protect him and guide him and have him fill the shoes of Senator McCain. And we just ask that he can just fall right into where he was before and run the state of Arizona in the way that it should be ran. We ask that you be with all the military that's out of barn and out in different areas, that you bring them home safely and protect them with their wives and their husbands. And we just ask that you protect each one of us here. And we ask a special blessing on all the people here in Cholo, that you just protect us and let the city and town grow to the best of its ability. And we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Alsop and Vice Mayor. Appreciate that.
I think she turned that off.
Just want to take a couple of liberties here and express our condolences to Don Berry's family. We appreciated the service that Don Berry has rendered on many organizations here in the city as be a great contribution to our planning and zoning and to many committees that he served on. And our condolences go to his family and their survivors here. We also want to express our appreciation for the service of Senator John McCain and our condolences to his family and appreciate his many years of service. Tonight, we have a special award we'd like to give to Councilmember Kelly. We recently came back from the League of Cities and Councilmember Kelly was not in attendance to that meeting. And they recognize elected officials for distinguished service award. Councilmember Kelly has earned this for 24 years of service. In recognition of his outstanding service to municipal government in Arizona, we'd like to present this to him tonight. Councilmember Kelly, thank you for your service.
Jean, stay over there. She's gonna take your picture.
Everyone just get, let's just get him up here. And then center here, everybody. Come on.
Are we all coming over there?
It's gonna take a while, Dan.
Sense of humor.
Hey, John, Jean.
Keep going, Jean.
The other recipients of 24 years, they brought it in a wheelchair. So, you know, we're just grateful. I don't think there was anybody beyond that. Maybe was there this year? So, that's a great accomplishment, Jean. Next item we have is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled, and we generally do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as whole. At this time, we have one person that has signed. If anyone else, this time when he's done may come up as well. We have Neil Traver. You state your name and address.
Validated it and allowed it to be on. So, it says Proposition 127 on the ballot initiative, or on the fall ballot. So, wanted to pass that information along to you and just again reiterate the, what that, that is not going to be a good thing economically for the state of Arizona. It's going to be very devastating for all of Arizona's economics, specifically in this White Mountain region of the state of Arizona. And I just wanted to come in and talk to you just briefly about that. I'll be here after the meeting to talk details about it, but we're just reaching out to try and share this information with the council, with the city of Cholo, and just let everyone understand what that really is. So, I'll be here throughout the council after the meeting tonight. If you guys want to talk to me specifically about details, I'd love to share information with you and talk to you more about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next item we have is the consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be reviewed or polled on the consent calendar? Not, I'll go over those items. We have a proclamation proclaiming September 12th through the 15th as Navajo County Fair Days, consideration of the Second Amendment to the Animal Shelter Service Agreement at Allies, consideration of amendment to the professional service contract with Armstrong Consultants for a Runway 624 rehabilitation project, and the consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting August 20th, 2018. We'll look for a motion. Have a motion by Councilmember Alsop. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? See that pass. Next item is new business. First item we have on new business is consideration of the award construction contract for East Thornton, Westwood subdivision roadway construction, City of Cholo Project R 20, I'm sorry, R 0318. Mr. Hemosaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
The city's fiscal year 2019 capital improvement program budget includes $415,000 for a roadway improvement project labeled East Thornton Mill and Overlay, and another $150,000 for a roadway improvement project labeled Westwood subdivision rebuilt road. The scope of work includes pulverizing existing asphalt, incorporating the pulverized material into the roadway base, and installing a new four-inch asphalt overlay for East Thornton and a new three-inch asphalt overlay in the Westwood subdivision. Proposed improvements are located along East Thornton, South First Drive, South Third Drive, West Neckless, and West Oliver. Reduce cost of mobilization and the cost to develop an additional project, the city count, or the city combined the two projects into one and bid it as a single project. Project was designed by city engineering staff with construction estimate of $525,000. Project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Hats construction paving at $453,695. Green Waste Recyclers of Arizona, $497,572.65. And Perkins Cinders at $602,346.18. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the East Thornton and Westwood subdivision roadway reconstruction, City of Cholo Project number R 0318, the hats construction in amount not to exceed $453,695. The bid schedule is attached, and I'm available for any questions.
Any question or comments? Councilmember Leach?
Real quick, it seems like this list is pretty short. Is everybody real busy? Or it seems like we usually have like 10 people. I just...
You'll see that in the next one as well. This one, I believe we had eight or nine people show up to the pre-bid. So, nine different contractors came to the pre-bid, and we received three bids. Yes, people are very busy right now. That's kind of what we're hearing.
Make sure they're still happy with us and still want to do our work. That's was my other concern. But, okay. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
Different subject, so.
Go ahead.
On the consent calendar, we had Navajo County Fair Days. Do you want to read, should we read that proclamation? Or did just, we approve it?
No, we just approved it.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I look for a motion on this item, then? 7A? Councilmember Crittenen?
I move to award the construction contract for the East Thornton and Westwood subdivision roadway reconstruction, City of Cholo Project number R 0319, to hatch construction in an amount not to exceed $453,695.
Motions are second? Second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? See that pass. Seven to zero. Thank you. Our next item is Item 7B, consideration of award of construction contract for Eighth Street and McNeil's Street improvements, City of Cholo Project R 1218, and approval of the associated budget transfers. Mr. Hemosaw.
Thank you. The city received a community development block grant, or CDBG grant, for approximately $242,000, for which the city council director used to construct roadway and pedestrian improvements along North Eighth Street and East McNeil in the downtown area. The scope of the work was advertised and include removing the and disposing existing asphalt, concrete, and drainage structures, and installing concrete curb and gutter, sidewalk, ADA ramps, driveways, and drainage infrastructure. The improvements were bid as a base bid and then a single additive alternate, which consists of installing ribbon curb along the north side of McNeil and a portion of Eighth Street. The engineer's estimate for the work was $239,000 for the base bid and $23,000 for the additive alternate. Construction bid documents were prepared by engineering staff. Invitation to bid was published as required with the following results. Western Grade LLC, base bid at $259,443.12. The added vault was $26,468.12 for a total bid of $285,468.12. Green Waste Recyclers of Arizona, base bid is $282,911.68. And the added vault for number one, $28,912.10. Their total bid was $311,823.78. Pavement replacement for the parking area and the areas next to the new curb in the project was removed from the scope of work due to limited budget grant. City staff will replace that pavement in the project after the curb and sidewalks are installed. After required environmental and administration fees are paid out of the grant, approximately $225,000 remains for construction. Staff is proposing to transfer $60,500 in bid savings from East Thornton and Westwood subdivision roadway replacement project to cover the total project cost of $285,468.12, which includes the base bit and the added alternate. And that was the previous item. And we just did 7A. Staff recommends awarding the contract for the Eighth Street and McNeil Street improvements, City of Cholo Project R 1218, Western Grade LLC, in amount not to exceed $285,468.12, and approve those associated budget transfers. Bid schedule is attached to this one as well, and I'm available for questions.
Yeah, Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a question. I know down Eighth Street, we've been doing a lot of work down there. Is that just pre-stuff for Western Grade to come in and finish up?
Yes, actually, there's, we've done a couple of things in this project. We've had to lower a water main, lower a sewer service. And we went ahead and removed some of the deteriorating sidewalk because we were there doing the work already for these sewer improvements and water improvements to kind of get the budget back closer to the grant amount and try to get things as close as we can to the ground.
Yeah, I, just a lot of people questioned what you're doing down there. Now, you know, now I'm looking at the bid. It's like, okay, so you just prep where, I told them, I says, Poppy, just prep work for all that stuff.
It is. And the actual gas company is going to be in there for this week and next week doing their portions. There are little warnings for the future drains and things like that.
Councilmember Crittenen?
There was between $40,000 and $50,000 that the contractors came in higher than we said they should charge. What, why?
Well, once again, this is another project where we had nine people show up at the pre-bid. We received two bids. And the large component of this project is concrete work. And we're seeing concrete prices go up to the point where the next time we do a CIP, we're really gonna have to make an adjustment to concrete work.
Councilmember Alsop.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I've noticed there's not...
We got some more questions.
I just got a comment, just because I've never, who's Green Waste Recyclers? Are they new?
No, it's the company that was awarded Eighth Street by the Elks Lodge. They're the ones doing that, that project there, that roadway project.
One, I must have been a...
Is that the one out next to the sender pit?
No, Elks Lodge. They're the ones doing the roadway.
No, he, amen, Green Waste Recyclers. Were they...
No, they're based out of Wilcox, Arizona.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you. I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award the contract for the Eighth Street and McNeil Street improvements, City of Cholo Project number R 1218, to Western Grade LLC, in amount not to exceed $285,468.12, and approve the associated budget transfers.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Leach. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? See that pass. Seven to zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item is Item 7C. He just won't go away.
Yeah, one more, okay.
They like spending our money, huh?
A little bit.
Consideration of award of professional service contract for design of West Cooley Sewer Improvement Project, City of Cholo Project S 0419. Mr. Hemosaw.
Thank you. The city's 2019 capital improvement program also includes $692,000 budget for the West Cooley Sewer Improvement Project. The scope of the work is to replace the sewer infrastructure along West Cooley between Central and North Eighth Avenue and replace connections off the, connecting roadways between First Ave and North Sixth Drive. City staff solicited a proposal from Ironside Engineering and Development, perform the necessary design services. Scope of Ironside proposal includes conducting required project survey, preparing construction design documents, coordinating with ADQ for approvals to construct, providing construction staking for the work, and completing record drawings after the improvements are made or as built. The proposed cost for the services is $62,750. A detailed scope of services is attached. Staff recommends awarding the professional services contract for the design of the West Cooley Sewer Improvement Project, Ironside Engineering Development Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed the $62,750. And that, like I mentioned, that scope of services is attached, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. I want, I'm looking at the drawing. I know we don't have it up on the screen for everybody to see. But, if you look at it, you would think that we're missing a piece in between third and second. So, if I flush the toilet, it's not going to go anywhere right through there. So, I just want to make sure that that, that is probably the high point where it goes off one side down the other?
It is.
Okay.
Everything basically on the west side flows to Fifth Drive, and everything on the other side of project proposed is Central Avenue.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crittenen?
I move to award the professional services contract for the design of the West Cooley Sewer Improvement Project, City of Cholo Project number S 0419, to Ironside Engineering and Development Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $62,750.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass. Seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next item is Item 7D, consideration of award of a contract amended for supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA control system phase two. Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Right on top of this with the budget. Just gotten the new year and your back for the sake of phase.
We gotta get it done.
That's good.
I guess since Shane spent a little time up here, I could have just had him stay up here and do it for me. But, I'll go ahead and try to do as good a job as he does. The approved five-year capital improvements program, CIP, includes funding for necessary upgrades to the supervisor control and data acquisition SCADA system for the city's water system. The city owns and operates an extensive potable water distribution system of wells, storage reservoirs, and booster pump stations that provide drinking water and fire protection to the residents of the city and surrounding areas. Technological advances require upgrading the system to consolidate and standardize electrical, control, instrumentation, and communication systems into a common, modern, and reliable control platform. In December 2017, staff prepared a request for qualifications and received responses from five interested companies. After the selection committee reviewed the statements of qualifications, Pace Advanced Water Engineering was determined to be the highest-ranked firm. Pace was the design firm that worked on the city's wastewater treatment plant upgrades as well. Pace demonstrates a complete understanding of the existing SCADA system and believes in using as much of the existing system as possible. Because of the large scope of the, of the upgrades, this project will be completed in phases over five years, with funding for the remaining four years included in the CIP plan. City council approved Phase 1 of the project at its March 20, 2018 meeting. Phase 1 is nearing completion, and staff intends to move immediately into Phase 2 to maintain continuity. Fiscal year 2018-2019 budget includes, and includes $190,000, $190,000 for the Phase 2 upgrades. The scope of Phase 2 includes continuing hardware upgrades by installing and configuring additional remote I/O input-output at booster pumps, replacing and programming radios, replacing the existing service servers with industrial rack servers, upgrading the SCADA software with Wonderware, that's really what it's called, WIN 911, and establishing a virtual machine, developing standard monitoring and control templates for the SCADA system, and programming and configuring the WIN 911 alarm system. The existing SCADA improvements will be reused until Phase 4, although the 911 alarm system will be updated. The programming upgrades for the tank configuration will be finalized, and the well and booster station configuration will progress in Phase 2 with completion in Phase 3. Again, future phases of the work will be presented to the council for approval as contract amendments. Staff recommends approving contract amendment for the supervisor control and data acquisition SCADA control system Phase 2 with Pace Advanced Water Engineering in an amount not to exceed $189,800. And I can try to answer some questions.
Thank you. That was long. Is there any discussion on this? Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I just was curious how you were able to squeeze $200 out of that, so we didn't have to spend the whole $189,000.
You know, what, what they actually did was, we programmed dollar amounts throughout the five years. And the second year was $190,000 piece of it. It's the biggest piece. And the consultants wanted to get as much of that work in that second phase as they could because this really is kind of a, one phase blends into the other phase, and some pieces can be done sooner than others. So, they just tried to maximize what they were doing with this scope that they wrote. So, basically, the fee matches the scope.
Thank you. So, they'll spend the other 200 next year, right?
They'll, hopefully, we'll get exactly what we want for a good price. And we don't know what the future will bring as far as cost.
I'm just trying to lighten it up a little. I didn't do a very good job, but I was trying.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Alsop?
I do, I just, I guess I'll do a motion.
I got it. Okay. I move to approve, approve the contract amendment for the supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA control system Phase 2 with Pace Advanced Water Engineering in amount not to exceed $189,800.
Thank you, Councilmember Leach. Have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Thank you. Hey, Jean, you know, it's just a, you gotta be quick.
He just works his way down, I guess.
I'm there. Thank you for that second, all three of you. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, any opposed? See that pass. Seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is Item 7E. Just look at the amended copy that you have, as placed with you tonight. It's a consideration of resolution R 2018-23 declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held August 28, 2018. Ms. Kurisaki?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Last Tuesday, August 28, the city held a primary election in consolidation with the federal, state, and county elections, and the city contracts with Navajo County to conduct its elections. When we prepared the consulting packet last Friday, we had only preliminary results, which is why, as of this morning, we, we received what are actually final results from the election, and that's what you have before you is the amended resolution and the staff summary. We had, the ballot had three council seats and a ballot proposition asking voters to adopt an update to the existing Cholo general plan. 2,750 total ballots were cast, the results will show. And the numbers that you are going to, what's called canvas tonight, makes these, what's called unofficial final results official. So, the, the numbers won't change. It's just your action will make them official. To win in the primary election, candidate must receive more than the majority vote calculation for the office of city council. And based on the results, it shows that the number of votes that a candidate would need to be cleared, to be declared elected is 937. We had four candidates, three of whom are sitting here. That is Mike Alsop, Brent Hatch, and John Leach Jr. We had a newcomer named Kevin Weaver. I show the results. The county's results show that Mike Alsop received 1,590 votes, Brent Hatch received 1,303, John Leach Jr. received 1,429, and Kevin Weaver received 1,299. All four candidates exceeded the 937 votes required. However, the three candidates that received the greatest number of votes are elected, declared elected in the primary. The proposition, which was called Proposition 416, was passed. 1,802 voted yes, 668 voted no. And that is also final for the proposition. Once you approve the resolution, these officials will, excuse me, the results will be made official record of the City of Cholo.
Thank you. Any questions from discussion? Councilmember Crittenen?
So, we're clear, the top three vote-getters were who?
Mike Alsop, Brent Hatch, and John Leach Jr.
Okay. No, we didn't go through that. Councilmember Kelly?
Obviously, there was evidently a lot of confusion caused by the preliminary, uncomplete vote count being published. And I know that's normal. We see it on the national election all night. We watch the TV as the numbers keep churning up as the election results come in with more and more areas reporting. One could almost, and I would be one of those, I guess, of a group that would say, it might be wise not to publish anything until you have final official numbers. It's not the way we do it in this country, right? And so, early on, we would have had a different result in who was elected. But, that vote count, as I'm understanding after asking questions, was not a complete count of all the ballots. Some of the mail-in ballots, is what I understand, had simply not been included in that preliminary results.
What happens is, when you go to the polling place, you show your identification. And so, they match your identification. And so, you indeed are the voter you say you are. You present identification, you are Gene Kelly. And so, they know that. And then you sign off on your name. So, they know that you indeed are voting as yourself. Well, when people, and, and this, not only the state, not only the city, the state, but nationwide, you know, there are a lot of people who get early ballots, which, which means you get it mailed to you. Well, to verify you as that voter, are they going to know who you are unless you sign it? So...
Signature.
Yes. So, what the county has to do with, with all the early ballots, they have to verify each signature. And so, that takes, that's very time-consuming. I mean, they are specially trained to do so, but it is very time-consuming. And so, the county told me they actually had something like 9,000 ballots to verify, or 9,000 signatures. And that is, as I said, very time-consuming. So, what happened is, a lot of people don't necessarily, you know, you might get the ballot in the mail August, they mailed it August 1. So, maybe you got it August 3. Not everybody hurries up and votes and mails it back. You know, some people, well, let's see, I'm too busy. I don't have time. A lot of people kind of wait till the last minute, either to mail it back, or they wait until the day of to drop it off at the polling place. polling place, so, and that tends to happen, they have a huge stack to go through on election day, plus all the provisional ballots, which, which are people who go in and let's say have, have moved from the address that's shown on their voter registration form, well, you cannot vote unless you vote what's called a provisional ballot. And doing so, then, it, it almost like re-registers you to vote, because you can't vote, you have to vote where your residence is, and your, it has to match. So, all of those took time, and, and as of Friday morning, when we prepared this, they had not been able to verify all those, those ballots, and so I knew they had a huge, huge stack to do. I have to commend the county staff, they came in on Saturday and worked nine hours to make sure they could, they could do this, because state statutes give us, you know, they tell us when we have to canvas the vote, I mean, we, it's just not on a limited time, so, they came in and, and took time off from, or, or worked on their day off, make sure we were, we were able to get results. But that's why, um, and, and, you know, in defense of the newspaper, they did understand that these were preliminary, preliminary, and so it was written in the article that, you know, based on what, what's here, we might assume this might be the result, but you can't tell until final results are in, so.
Thank you.
I apologize, it's kind of unfortunate.
The important is, uh, this, nothing is official until we make it official tonight with this resolution, so there can't be anything posted official until after we make this motion, but we're using the final count ballot.
What you're saying is, as of now, all of the ballots have been authenticated and counted.
Correct.
So there's no more.
Correct.
Left out there in the breezeway or any.
That's correct. They wouldn't, they wouldn't send us complete final unless it was completely.
Thank you. And yeah, there's probably some out there still, because I know of a few people that thought they could still mail theirs in on Tuesday, and I said, no, you gotta take them. They, they're out of town, so.
They're not valid.
That happens sometimes, if they receive the ballot after, you know, the deadline is seven PM.
Right.
On election day, if they get it, if it comes in the mail Wednesday morning, it's invalid, and that's why you will see that there are actually some ballots.
So yeah, there is some more out there, but they're not going to count.
They're not valid, is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll look for a motion. Vice mayor?
I think it's only fitting that I make the motion on this. Before I make that motion, uh, I'll just recall something that, uh, happened, I recall over the weekend when I was sitting and watching these results happen. As a youth in scouting, I had the chore of handing out little Liberty Bell-looking hangers for doorknobs, and on that, it said, every vote counts, and it was simple. I thought, oh, that's foolish, you know, what are we doing this for? I know now why we did that, because every vote does count, and for anybody that didn't vote, you should make an effort to vote. It's a, a right that we have, we should honor it and take care of that responsibility as American. I'll, uh, move to adopt resolution number twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen dash twenty-three, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August the twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
We have a motion, we have a second by council member Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? See that pass, seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is item, summary of current events by council members, council member who's wishing to share current events may do so. Council member also.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. Uh, attended a meeting for Main Street, um, and we went over how the farmer's market's doing, it's doing great this year, that's going to be going through, uh, the end of September, so if you'd like to get out there and, and see what's out there, please, uh, you have a few more weeks to do it, and have some fun doing that. Uh, the Wayfinder Sign Project is still being updated right now, we're still putting signs up, and everything is looking nice, uh, they're getting a lot of good compliments on that. Also, we had, uh, this, September first was the Battle of the Bands and food vans, and I, if you had a chance to, uh, make it there and see what it was like, it was great. For the very first time of, uh, Main Street putting this on, there was over twenty-one hundred people in attendance, and, uh, the food vans, uh, they had a great time, they said that they haven't had so much people coming up and getting food in, in a long time, so they, they did real, really good, and they, and they, uh, are looking forward for coming back next year. Uh, had a chance to go to League of Cities and Towns meeting, uh, last week, and, uh, listened to a guy named, uh, Bruce Vincent, and, uh, just like the vice mayor was talking about something he heard, um, Bruce really said something that really brought me home too, was, uh, it's easy to get elected, but it's hard to govern, and, uh, it, to see what you have to do on city council and what happens on city council, and the different agendas that the mayor puts you into and, and, uh, being involved in, it, it definitely is a hard thing to, to manage, and, and, uh, it's, um, it, in some ways, it's rewarding, in a lot of ways, uh, it's not, you have to really work at doing the things you have to do. So, just his words, and this guy's from, uh, he's going to be here in Sholo the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, doing some seminars, he's from Libby, Montana, and I, right now, I still don't know where he's going to be at, but, uh, if you have a chance to listen to him, uh, you need to get on, listen to him, he's a really, uh, neat guy to listen to. And at the very end, I think, want to thank everybody that did get out and vote in the primaries, and, um, I just want to thank, thank everybody for their votes, and I'm looking forward to, uh, uh, serving Sholo and, and the people of Sholo for another four years, thank you.
Thank you. Next council member? Anyone else? Just, uh, briefly, just remind people, I had an opportunity to drive over the, the summit mountains into Alpine yet over the weekend, and if you haven't been over that way short, in recent goal, because it's beautiful, and I haven't seen our mountains look as, as great and green as they do coming back all the way around, so it's, it's a beautiful place that we live, and we need to take care of it, and council member Alsop thought this guy is a fourth-generation logger, and so he has some great comments about the forest industry and some of the things, looking forward to him coming. It was a great conference, I appreciate the council members, uh, their efforts and staff for things they did to make that a good showing for our city, and some great things that we're able to take away from that conference and learn, and appreciate the opportunity, and our youth delegates who went down and represented Sholo at that conference as well. From the time to city manager for his report.
Hey, we, we want to thank all the voters also that exercised their right to vote last Tuesday, congratulations to Mike Alsop, to John Leach Junior, and Brent Hatch on their reelection, we also want to thank Kevin Weaver for participating in that process. The two thousand eighteen general plan passed the update, so that'll be, that has to be voted on every ten years, so we're, that plan will be good for the next ten years. The, the three council members will be sworn in on, at the December fourth meeting. The aquatic center's closed temporarily because of equipment failure, um, following , um, unexpected power outage, staff has ordered replacement parts, and we hope the pool will be operational by the end of the week, end of this week. The second annual guns and hoses softball game between the Sholo Police Department and the Timber Mesa Fire Medical District is next Tuesday, September eleventh at six PM at the senior field at City Park. There's free admission with raffle tickets for sale, the race funds for the Darren Reed Foundation, a charity that supports local law enforcement, there'll be hot dogs, hamburgers, and snacks available for sale with the proceeds benefiting the scholarship fund, and also be raffle drawings between the innings. Recreation staff is accepting registrations for the popular itty-bitty Olympics for boys and girls six years old and younger, at Saturday, September twenty-second, at the senior field at City Park, the cost is five dollars. The events will begin at eleven AM, and if you want more information on the itty-bitty Olympics, call five three two forty-one forty. And just as a reminder, there's a lot of construction activity in different areas of town, that you approved several more projects this evening, so we appreciate the patience of the neighbors in those areas, but there are much-needed improvements that will help us into the future, so thank you for being patient with us.
Appreciate that. Also want to welcome and, and appreciate the opportunity of welcoming vice mayor, council member Leach, and council member Alsop in their success, it'll be great serving with you guys another few years here, so, thank you. You know, I do want to call out the six hundred and sixty-eight people who voted no for our proposition four sixteen though, I, I mean, really, six hundred and sixty-eight people in our community, come and tell us what you don't like about our, our plan. You never came to any meetings, you never shared anything, so we don't have any idea what it is that you don't like, other than you just voted no, so please be informed, please share us your thoughts, and we'd love to hear from you, and good or bad, we'll take both sides, so, appreciate it. Anyone else have comments or scheduling the meetings you'd like to schedule, or, other than what we have already coming up? Remember our retreat on October thirtieth?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, yeah, okay. All right, we, uh, have an executive session tonight, uh, where we'll be discussing and consulting legal advice of attorneys, uh, concerning property purchase, sell, or lease of real property, uh, so I need a motion to move into executive session. We have a motion by vice mayor seconded by council member Alsop. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? See that pass, seven to zero. Thank you for being with us tonight, appreciate it, at this time, we adjourn into executive session.
It's almost like people that didn't read it, like the word.